PM, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Today certainly is one of the most exciting days for me doing my tenure here in Des Moines Public Schools. I have not been more excited, enthusiastic, just filled of so much pride and joy to have worked with a team of nineteen individuals, nineteen of my teammates, my valued colleagues, who represented the voices, the dreams and the vision of our 5,000 teammates. We spent about the past approximately six months working on what I will personally characterize as a bold and ambitious five-year strategic plan, a plan that will guide and drive the work that we do as a district for the next five years and foreseeable future. I want to kick off by sharing what I consider to be the five big rocks. The plan, when you dive into it, and it's an excellent read, something that you'll enjoy. You can read it any time of day. Five pillars, twenty-eight strategic objectives, fifty-nine strategic actions, and of utmost importance, one hundred key results. Why the one hundred key results are important? It's important because that's the way that we are going to measure the progress that we're making as we implement the strategic plan. It's the way for us as a district and not just a strategic planning committee to keep our finger on the pulse of what is happening over the next five years. I'm excited because the individuals who have sat in this room and other spaces work tirelessly and putting together this plan did so with a spirit of vulnerability, be challenging each other's thinking and push under mental models that have probably kept us in a place where we have not necessarily optimized our potential as a district. And with that said, I'm going to yield my time, Madam Chair, and turn the mic over to a dynamic middle school leader, not only one of the best in the state, but one of the best in the country, Ms. Carrie Romo.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carrie Romo, and I am the proud principal of Goodwill Middle School. And for the last five months, as Dr. Roberts said, I along with several of my colleagues have had an opportunity to have critical conversations and challenge ourselves to think deeply and intentionally about the future of DMPS. Today, we stand at a pivotal moment in our district's journey, a moment where the power of vision, commitment and courage converge. As we introduce the strategic plan crafted with purpose and passion, informed by student experience, listening sessions, data, needs assessments and possibility, it's not just a blueprint for change, it's a declaration of our collective ambition. I, for one, believe in the transformative potential of Des Moines Public Schools. That's why I've spent the last eighteen years here. This plan is not just about academic growth, it's about reclaiming hope, dismantling barriers and ensuring that every child has the opportunity to succeed in ways that we have yet to imagine, not regardless of who they are, but intentionally because of the cultural assets that inform who they are and who they hope to become. We dare to reimagine a legacy of opportunity, equity and excellence. This is a moment to cultivate history together. And cultivate is a word that you will see headline each strategic priority. This word came to us as homage to this great state that we live in and its rich farming and agricultural history. And cultivate also refers the intentional effort for us to nurture, develop and sustain initiatives, relationships and environments that align with the district's goal. So I want to ask you to join me in imagining what it will take for DMPS to become the employer of choice, the district of choice and the partner of choice. And so I'm going to ask us to listen to Jay Avant, Hoover alum, class of 2021, as he shares his critical reflection via video.
So my name is Jay Avant, and I am a real estate agent. I've been doing that since I graduated high school. And I went to Hoover High School, best school in the nation, if you ask me. I say DMPS prepared me for after high school. There was a career fair when I was sixteen that I went to, which I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he had sold the Wells Fargo Building in West Des Moines, which kind of showed me how much money he made, which kind of inspired an idea of like, oh, I didn't know that there was that much money being made out there. So I would say the career fair prepared me. And then we had like this economics class, which kind of taught me about understanding the knowledge of money and how things work. And I would say those are like the two biggest things. And then I had a coach named Sal, who would still discipline me during football that just made me like, hey, you got to figure it out, kid. So I would say that. I believe DMPS didn't prepare me for after high school based on like I mentioned, that the career fair inspired the idea. But after the idea was sparked, there wasn't too much to go into it afterwards. So me being a real estate agent, there wasn't too much of a plan set in place, if that was my passion, for me to go down that road. Now, I think there's some things that they may be doing now, but in my time as a high school student there, that for what I wanted to do, there wasn't too many resources or people in place to kind of show me how I could get to where I wanted to go. If you were trying to become a nurse, that there's great plans or people in place that could help you, like if you're in a broad or maybe most people want to do that subject or go into that field, that there's a lot of help for that. But if you're more of a niche, more specific career goal or career path, there's not too many things in place for that specific road to go down to. So I would say that is how they would help. If you want to be a nurse, you have a lot of good help, the people that teach you there with the partnership that they have. But if you wanted to be more of like a real estate agent, then there's not too many things in place. The way I have been personally involved with Future Ready is I have been working hand in hand with the Des Moines Public Schools administration on creating what we would call the Mont Scholarship Foundation, named after me. So if you were a student in high school, being a junior or senior or whenever you started sparking the idea that you wanted to go on and become something of a real estate agent, you would work with me and work through me on getting what we would call a scholarship of X amount of dollars to help you pay for school. Because if you were like me who grew up under the poverty line, that money could be a financial burden, which most students find themselves going through, that you would lean on me to pay for that school. And we would educate you on how to have a great career starting off.
All right, so Jay teased us up well for talking about one aspect of the strategic plan, and that is the Future Ready aspect. Before we jump into the five strategic priorities that Dr. Roberts alluded to, we want to talk to you a little bit about the strategic planning process because we were lucky to have a really strong partner in this work in New Leaders, a nationally recognized organization that works to cultivate leaders across our country. The strategic planning process that we used, that you can also find in the plan, is a six-step process. And as Carrie talked about, that started with a needs assessment, a very thorough analysis by new leaders and external partner using different documents, all of the feedback from the board listening sessions, the community listening sessions, as well as feedback from the Reimagining Education Committee. And then that led into our data review, a very deep dive. Josie and team were pretty instrumental in pulling together all of the various data for our partners to look at. Our committee convened in September to do a little bit of work getting to know each other, since this was the first time we had all worked together in this capacity, learning a little bit about ourselves as leaders and how we show up in the work so we could make sure that we had a balanced team to draft that initial strategic plan. We then went out to gather feedback from stakeholders. Those included our Reimagining Education Committee. We gathered feedback from leaders. We gathered feedback from teachers at both the elementary and secondary levels to then come together and finalize our strategic plan. And really, the next step is probably the most ambitious, the most, I don't want to say daunting because that sounds negative, but certainly the one that's going to require the most work. And that is cascading the strategic plan. We've got a beautiful document in front of you that is the result of lots and lots of hard work. And of course, our communications team's talents to make it look good. But now really, the difficult work starts, and that is making it all happen. As you'll see, it's a very ambitious plan, and we believe very strongly in it. A couple of key terms that we want to make sure you're familiar with show up here on the next couple of slides. So our strategic actions are really the fifty-six actions that Dr. Roberts referred to, these higher-level actions that are going to lead to the achievement of our strategic objectives. And again, we're looking at really a five-year forecast, but we're going to be monitoring along the way. And as we get closer and closer to that five-year timeline, we'll be using that, our progress, to forecast out the next five years. Our key results are what's going to hold us accountable to you, to our students, to our families and to our community. These are the outcomes that we measure of our strategic actions to make sure that we are on the right track in meeting those higher-level strategic objectives. Our, sorry, I clicked over a little too fast. My apologies. The strategic priorities and strategic objectives. As Dr. Roberts alluded to, the strategic priorities are our five pillars. The cultivating word that Carrie alluded to, you will see throughout. These are the areas that really emerged as a result of that needs assessment, as a result of the data analysis, as a result of all of the feedback that we received as the most important things to drive us toward our outcomes of high levels of achievement, success, family sustaining wage for all of our students. And then our strategic objectives are those five-year targets. So my apologies for going out of order on that. Finally, just wanted to talk through our theory of action. So our theory of action is how we cascaded from strategic priorities to strategic objectives to actions. So in a nutshell, our theory of action is that if we have these resources and we do these things, these strategic actions, we will get these results. These results lead us to the strategic objectives, those longer-term impacts that we want to see. And I'm going to kick it over to Josie Sturgis, our Director of Assessment, Data and Evaluation, to talk through the overview of our strategic priorities.
Thanks, Krista. All right. So you've heard us mention them. They've been teased, I feel like, for the last ten minutes. Here we are.
It's a very sensitive clicker.
It's a very sensitive clicker. Sorry about that. We have five strategic priorities. It sounds a little trite, but what's in a name? As we started with this process, as we got through our needs assessment, as we worked with new leaders on the information that they had brought to us, one of our first levels of organization was to take all of that information and identify what are the trends here that we're seeing and what are the themes that we're seeing that are the true root causes that we need to address, not only to meet our eventual strategic outcomes, but also our board goals and guardrails. All of these pieces have to work together. Those five strategic priorities that were identified are cultivating equity and excellence through high-quality teaching and learning, cultivating well-being, cultivating transformative talent, cultivating organizational effectiveness and cultivating community and collaboration. On the next slide, we wanted to give you kind of a high-level overview of how we see these aligning directly with our goals and guardrails. We know each of these pillars has to work together. No one of these things could be taken out of this plan and the plan still be complete. And so we wanted to show how, similarly with our goals and guardrails, work has to be done across our district to meet those goals and guardrails. And so we acknowledge and we know that all of these pieces have to work together. And even within our structures in the district through Tactical Cabinet, we're expecting to see work across all of the departments in each of these areas in order to be successful. All right, we'll pass it off.
Next up is Dr. Lundin to talk through our first strategic objective.
Great. And board members, I think the way we'll do this is we'll listen and then ask some questions and give some feedback at the end, if everybody's okay with that format. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Lundin. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. Before I say anything else, I'd like to introduce you to one of our students who has something more profound to say.
Imagine if every teacher helped us discover our talents and dreams and showed us how we could use them to make the world a better place.
So Vivian's absolutely on point. We have the opportunity to imagine a system and an educational model in which students' dreams and aspirations can be made priority number one from the moment they enter our pre-K classroom to the moment they cross the dais on the graduation stage at high school. And you'll notice in the strategic objectives that we have here under strategic priority number one, there's no ambiguity around the ambitiousness and boldness of those objectives. You'll notice they're high numbers, and you'll notice there is no apology there. But the committee has worked for more than five months to grapple with what the specific action steps will look like that will bring us to a point where we can achieve these ambitious goals. We start with one that I think you are very familiar with from our previous conversations. One hundred percent of students graduating with skills and competencies to pursue college, career or service pathways. And I've had the privilege of speaking with this board in the past about one of the key levers that we intend to use to get us to that point, which is the Diploma Plus Model under Goal Three. We believe, and we'll be showing you data in just a couple of weeks, that it will be transformative to be able to place these kind of distinction opportunities in front of students that will guide students not only through a successful high school experience, but prepare them for success beyond and queue them up for an academic advising experience that works with them far before they enter the high school classroom and are setting them up for success at every step along the way. What we haven't talked to you as much about are some of the other programs that we're looking to put into place soon, very soon, in order to set up our students for that graduation success and preparedness for college, career or service. One of those is Ninth Grade On Track. We know by research that you can predict a student's likelihood of their graduation and their ultimate life outcomes by looking at their performance in the ninth grade year. And so the Ninth Grade On Track Program, which is led by a Ninth Grade On Track Coordinator and will be across all of our high schools, will be looking specifically at how not only we can provide advising and support to students in the ninth grade experience, true one-on-one support along the way, but also track their performance systematically and be able to intervene as needed in order to ensure that if they get through that ninth grade year, that they'll be on a smooth track towards success in the years that pass it. That students graduating with skills and competencies to pursue college, career, service will also depend highly on something you've heard about, but that we're doubling down on. And that is our use of GLEAM across our classrooms. And specifically, using GLEAM not only to ensure a high level of high-quality, rigorous, engaging, affirming and meaningful instruction, but also to ensure that there's a continuous coaching and development process along the way for our educators and our educational leaders to see how they can improve the quality of instruction and by extension, the quality of educational outcomes for their students. Finally, we know that that preparedness for college, career and service pathways is going to depend on our students being ready for 21st century technology and a robust program of digital literacy. Luckily, later today, you're going to be hearing from our Chief Information Officer about some of what's going on now. But there's so much more to be done in terms of getting our students 21st century technology literate and prepared to operate in a dynamic workforce, college classroom or in the course of service. Next, you'll see that we've set an ambitious goal of ninety percent of students meeting grade-level proficiency or literacy outcomes. We know that literacy matters and that literacy queues up success in every other content area along the way, which is why we are deepening our investment in content known as science of reading across pre-K through 12th grade and ensuring that we're not only setting up teachers with the initial training by which they can be instilling science of reading principles in their students, but continually reinforcing them and ensuring that teachers have the high-quality resources and support they deserve to be able to execute with success. We want to coach them on the practice of teaching the science of reading to the point where nobody feels like they're having to improvise, but instead, they're anchored in research and methodology that shows that it's instilling literacy principles in our students. That ninety percent of students meeting grade-level proficiency in literacy will also require us to implement and utilize a multi-tiered system of support that ensures that regardless of whether the tier one, tier two or tier three needs of a student are being identified, whether they be in literacy, math, science or behavioral, that that campus has a model and a methodology by which those students are provided with the intervention and support that's needed along the way and that their progress is tracked along the way. It is truly a data-driven analytical model that will improve not only student outcomes, but our assuredness and confidence that we're going to be achieving this goal. And finally, you'll see that we've set the goal that there's opportunity and achievement gaps between student groups show no more than a five percent variance across discipline and programs. For too long, we have accepted as a country and as a district that there are certain student groups that are just inherently falling behind in when it comes to performance, whether they be our special education students or our multilingual students, our students of poverty, our students of color, whoever they may be. We cannot settle for ingrained acceptance of gaps in student performance that we know can be remedied through thoughtful practice. That's going to require us not only to be looking with great scrutiny on how our individual student groups are performing at every stage of the pre-K through 12th grade model, but in particular, to double down on universal full-day pre-K in our schools to ensure that every student, regardless of their background, regardless of the home or zip code they may live in, has the opportunity to start their pre-K through 12 journey in a place that is instructionally strong and that is inclined to queue them up for readiness in the elementary, middle and high school environment. In short, these strategic objectives are ones that are bold. They are ones that we are genuinely excited about, and they're going to be hard work. They're going to require every one of the 5,000 teammates that we work with to invest themselves in being a part of setting up kids for success from birth to age eighteen and beyond. We're excited to see that come to fruition, and we look forward to your support as we bring that to bear in Des Moines Public Schools. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to my colleague, Anne Cross of the DMEA.
Good evening, board. Like Robert said, my name is Anne Cross. And for the past seventeen years, I served as a high school science teacher with the district, currently on leave to serve as the President of the Des Moines Education Association, which represents about thirty-five hundred of those 5,000 employees. And I am here to introduce the priority two, cultivating well-being. We'll start with a student.
Imagine if every classroom was a place where all kids felt like they belonged and all kids started the school day feeling happy and safe.
Priority two, cultivating well-being. Students and staff truly flourish when well-being is prioritized. Only in environments where individuals feel safe, supported and valued can they unlock their fullest potential. With strategic priority number two, we have five objectives. They, like with strategic priority one, are quite bold, but we truly believe that we can obtain this and, like Alonso said, that we can have everyone feeling like they can come to school safe and happy. One thousand or one hundred percent[1449.32] 1,000 or 100% of students feel safe at school. 100% of students feel a sense of well-being in the community. 100% of students demonstrate growth in transformative social and emotional learning competencies and the portrait of a graduate competencies. 95% of students will have satisfactory attendance. 90% of staff will report a sense of well-being in spring 2030. Some ways that we believe that we can make these objectives happen is by increasing student access to innovative programming activities and athletics, and by celebrating teachers and all staff in meaningful ways for success is big and small. I'll turn it over for our next priority to Peter LeBlanc.
Good evening, everyone. Peter LeBlanc, I am one of the directors in our talent and personnel team, and we'll start out with one of our young people. Introducing us, Mateo introducing us here.
Imagine if every teacher and staff member felt supported, valued, and inspired to stay at our school because they were given chances to learn, grow, and make a difference for all of us.
So Mateo said it right there. How can we have a staff here that feels like they're learning and growing so they can provide this wonderful experience for the young people that we're responsible for taking care of every single day? And when I think about that, and I think about our priority here cultivating transformative talent, excuse me, we elected to use that word transformative instead of just saying cultivating talent because what we are looking for are for individuals who want to transform the experiences that our students have in our classrooms every single day, who want to go out and do, go and change what we do in public education every single day. So that was intentional that we chose that word. Okay, keep going back on there we go. So as we think about our priority, our objectives here, excuse me, they feel really bold and ambitious to me when I think about number one, and I think about 40% of our staff members, teachers and leaders being individuals of color. That is not where we are today, but in five years, I believe we can be there. Why do I believe that? Because of all the work that we are doing and presenting to you today within this strategic plan. When I think about what brings a person to our brand, Des Moines Public Schools, how do we get that national exposure and experience to go out there and attract the kind of transformative talent that we want to see here? I go back to priority number one, and our students having these wonderful learning experiences in our classroom and getting outcomes that are far above and beyond what people are getting across the country, that is going to attract the talent that we're looking for here. What else is going to attract the talent that we're looking for here? Providing a environment that our teachers and our educators, no matter what their role is, they know that they're seen, heard, supported, and cared for, that their well-being means something to us, and they experience that every single day. And their worst day is somebody else's best day because we've created that kind of environment here, that kind of our employees feel cared for in that way. And that's how we attract that type of talent here. So that means that we have to reimagine things that we do when it comes to hiring. That means we have to reimagine things that we do when it comes to placing and selecting and moving people around. But we have that ability and that willingness to do that, and the drive to do that because we know that's what we need to do for the students that we're responsible for. And each Monday at orientation, I tell people when I have the opportunity, we're responsible for 30,000 of somebody else's babies every single day, and that means something. That means something to me. So when we think about our objective number two and number three specifically, this is about how are we pouring into our people? How are we taking who they are, learning about who they are, figuring out what they need, and continuing to pour into them? That's how we keep the talent that we have because we can't just be about bringing other people in and not keeping the people that we have. And this, the strategic actions that you will see here is the beginning of how we begin to do that as we attempt to transform who is in front of our students every single day. And lastly, that last strategic objective is about, I know it talks about performance review, but it also is about clarity. It's about clarity of what your job is, and then how we are going to assess your performance against that, against what we told you your job was going to be. And that level of clarity and specificity around why I am here and what I am doing is going to allow people to be clear about what their jobs are, know how to ask for help and support, know what support to ask for and who that person is, and know that we are here and they have a performance review process that is about, that is growth oriented and about seeing you become a better person and a better educator because we are going to continue to pour into you and put you in positions where your talents align so that you can serve our kids like we need you. And with that, I get to turn it over to Michelle for strategic priority number four.
All right, strategic priority number four cultivating organizational effectiveness. We'll start out with a student again.
Imagine if our schools had everything they needed, like cool technology and safe buildings, so every kid had the same chance to learn and try exciting new things.
All right, so cultivating organizational effectiveness really is going to allow our district to function as a highly aligned and efficient educational system, but beyond, excuse me, beyond efficiency, it talks and speaks to access to innovative programming and amazing facilities. So looking, oh, there we go. So through a few strategic objectives, that first one, by 2030, and this one's big, we're excited about this one, open enrollment out of DMPS will not exceed open enrollment in. Through some strategic actions, including the work already underway with graduate, the graduate profile, reimagining education and thinking about our facilities and our programming, we really want DMPS to be a destination district and keep our students and even bring other students in. That next one, 100% of resources equitably allocated and monitored, all aligned to the strategic plan so that we have a system for making sure that those resources are aligned with this work and hold tightly to this work. In this one, we defined resources as time, people, and money, and we want everything to align with the plan. And then that final one, by 2030, 100% of stakeholders and school leaders indicate satisfaction with operational supports, allowing us leaders to focus on teaching and learning and keep the focus, keep the focus on that teaching and learning. So that sums up priority four. I will hand it over to Rose for priority five.
Hi, my name is Dr. Rose Dino, and I'm head vocal music at Roosevelt High School. Been really honored to be a part of this. I have taught in four different urban districts across the nation, and there's just something about Des Moines Public, this is my 11th year here, and the priority that I am presenting to you is cultivating community and collaboration. And like all of the others, we'll start with the video.
Imagine families, teachers, and our community work together like a big team, share ideas in helping us get ready for the future, no matter what we choose to do.
Well, as we heard in that video and actually in our introductory video from Jay Avant, talking about the opportunities that Des Moines Public Schools has provided for our students, but also other opportunities that we have to collaborate, you can go through, our first strategic action is that 100% of students will have a meaningful connection to the community through life, college, and career opportunities. And some of the actions that we have that we'd like to put in place beyond just career fairs is working on building internships with our businesses, working on building, even if it is not just a career-based internship, but bringing mentors in. We really want to get our students outside and learning beyond the four walls of our buildings so they can get that real-life experience. And as we know, as Jay had mentioned, there might be a more niche program where we need to create that opportunity for them so that they are prepped for that life beyond high school. The next one is family and community members, our collaborative partners in student learning. I am also a parent for DMPS, and so when I, when I'm working on this, I'm thinking beyond just, oh, I'm going to be part of the PTA, or I'm going to help support my students with their homework, how can we bring our families in and help them feel welcome in our schools? And so some of the, some of the opportunities that we have through this is thinking through our community partners and bringing them in. Yes, we have 120 community partners, but currently, I know it's being worked on, but having a database so that families can know what opportunities do we have, developing a way so that we can monitor the needs of our families to ensure that we are providing them with the correct, the correct community partners. And so we're really excited about that. I also grew up in a very small community, and the school was kind of a hub. And so even though we're a large district, this provides us an opportunity to be hubs for our communities as well and to really honor the knowledge and the experiences that they have and their identities. And then the final one is that internal and external communication fosters trust, improves perception, and inspires us to tell our story. So as we know with media and everything, we don't always get to tell everything that we do, and there are so many schools and with a district that's serving 30,000 students in 60 different schools, 5,000 employees, and our communications department of not as many people, not every story can be shared. And so our hope with this strategic action is to be able to develop a way so that our schools, through guidance, can begin sharing our stories regularly so that our families can plug in. And then also making sure that in any of this communication, that we are ensuring that we are developing ways that we can communicate with all of our families in all of the languages and their home languages. So, thank you.
My name is Steve Shapen. I'm the proud principal of Roosevelt High School, and so I wanted to share with you briefly the next steps that we're going to undertake. As Krista and Josie had articulated in the beginning, now we have the really important work of cascading this 30,000-foot view of what our strategic plan is going to be into the various departments and entities of Des Moines Public Schools. We have a system in place, the continuous cycle of implementation and progress monitoring that every single school in DMPS uses for its school-based school improvement plans. And so we want to use this system that is already in place that we use to report to the state how we're doing in our school improvement efforts to, as a model for how we can cascade this to all of the various departments in DMPS to make sure that this isn't just a five-year plan that goes on a shelf, but that it's a plan that is a living document, that we are constantly reflecting on our actions, revising what needs to be revised so that our ambitious goals are something that we can be proud of achieving in five years. You, as a board, have put together and updated and revamped mission vision that is aligned perfectly to this strategic plan. And so when you look at the vision that you created of preparing and inspiring students to achieve beyond what they can imagine, for them to be resilient, to navigate a complex and changing world, that is what this strategic plan is set up to do. The mission to have excellence and students to have multiple pathways. Hopefully, you saw through the cultivating language that that's exactly what we're set forth to do in the next five years is to be, as has been said, a district of choice for students, families, and staff so that we can create the conditions for everybody to flourish in Des Moines Public Schools. And so I'd like to invite up all members of the strategic planning team. They're listed here for you. They're here as well, but I, it's been referenced that it's a wonderful group of individuals that represent a cross-section of district staff, district leaders, teachers, our DMEA partners. It's really just a lovely group, and we've had such a wonderful time getting to know each other, making new connections, and working together. And so these are the members that are able to be with us tonight that have made this strategic plan possible. So thank you to them. And with that, we are open to any questions that you might have.
Well, I'll kick us off and just say wow. I was reflecting on, and I want to extend so much gratitude to all of you. I was reflecting on a moment, and I don't know if Jenna or Maria remember this, but we, when we came into the district, one of the first questions we asked was, where's the plan? And we need to have one. And so thank you for doing the really, really, really hard work. It's hard. And so I just want to say how excited I am, how excited, you know, I am to work with you, partner with you, to help accomplish this. I wrote down a couple of things, and I might have paraphrased Principal Ramos, but the declaration of our collective ambitious vision, was I close? I heard hubs for the community, for our community by Dr. Dino. I heard nurture, develop, and sustain. Like, what powerful words. So I want to say thank you. I'll say thank you on behalf of the board, just because I thought actually maybe a way that we'd kick off is, I'd love every board member to actually just say one thing that you really liked about the plan. We have some questions, but let's just start with that. Like, what's the thing that popped for you that you really want to call out?
You're not really going to ask me to use one word, so.
I know.
But I did, I love this because it's aspirational, it's specific, it's compassionate, and it's humble. I like, I love all of those things about it, and I think this is something we can be incredibly proud of. I'm so proud to be associated with all of you for coming up with this. It is, I think, something that we can all aspire to, so.
Thanks. Other board members?
Yeah, I can go next. Thank you so much. I would say the one thing that just stands out to me is the audacity. To say we are going to have 100% of students graduate, we're going to have 100% of students have a meaningful connection to community, and the things that you've said, I was nervous at first because I said, wow, this is lofty, but how much better it is to say we're going to have 100% and land at 99.9 than to sell ourselves short by saying, we're going to go for 75% next year. So thank you for the audacity in this plan. It's impressive.
I feel like we're raising the bar, not just for students, but for everyone, for staff, for admin, for the board. And it is truly incredible for me to see what 2030 will be like. I'm excited to see the growth in the district, and I loved what Dr. Lundin said, not completely, but here's at the beginning what he said, "We cannot settle by the ingrained acceptance." And I think that the expectation, yes, Dr. Lundin, that we've had of certain groups of students, of staff, really has led us to be where we are today, and that is unacceptable. And I love the change, and thank you for the enthusiasm with which you all presented. Thank you.
We did get a little sneak peek of this ahead of time, so I had a chance to go through it, and.
She sent a text out with exclamation marks.
You were stealing my thunder.
Sorry.
Because I was going to say, anyone who knows me, or my husband will easily tell you, I don't give out compliments like left and right. And Dr. Roberts did get a text that had exclamation points in it because this was probably, it's like probably one of the crowning achievements in my time on the board to see this produced from him and from you all. So honestly, like I'm starting to choke up a little bit. I feel like finally, like we're all on the same page, we're moving in this bold direction together, and this gives me so much hope. And as a board member, some measure of assurance that the time that we all give away from our families, away from everything to be here, like it's gonna, it's gonna create something beautiful for our community in our future. So thank you.
I too would like to extend my gratitude to the community, or the committee, rather, and the community. Your hearts are very apparent in what you've presented to us today and what I see here, and I am grateful that you're sharing your, as Matt Smith would say, your heart work with us. So thank you for that. And one thing that I was really excited to see was how you grounded the work in our goals and guardrails, and that real alignment is exciting to see and hopeful. And it, I think it will be reassuring for our district to see this isn't just another new thing. There is true alignment, and we are all rowing in the same direction. So thank you for that. Another highlight was to see that all of, and I would need to pull it up exactly, but all of our professional development, and every time our teams come together, the work will be grounded in that cultural proficiency, and that really means a lot as well. So there's so much to highlight here, but, and, not but, but I'm truly grateful. Thank you all.
All right, my turn. I am speechless as a product of Des Moines Public Schools and a proud parent of graduates and elementary school students right now. I'm excited. I appreciate everyone you guys taking your time and going through this. One thing that pops out that really holds dear in my heart is cultivating well-being. And then a statement from Anne, "Students and staff of DMPS truly flourish when well-being is prioritized." I am excited about this. I think it's long overdue, and way to go, team.
So now, I'd love to ask a few questions. You know, I think let's, we'll time limit, maybe everybody goes around and asks a question and see how we're doing. I guess the question is, how do you want to navigate who answers? And so maybe, you know, we'll ask a question, and then you know who's best to step up. I really appreciate the starting point, which was the acknowledgement that actually now the work really begins, which is the cascading. And so I'd love for, you know, however you want to approach this, a couple of you to respond to the plan to cascade this, and then specifically, I have two questions. So there's like the cascading of communicating through the whole school, school system, and then how will it connect with performance and the performance review process? So those are maybe the two questions as it relates to cascading.
All right, thank you for that question. In the beginning, I talked about our partner and new leaders. So through a pretty rigorous RFP process, we got 14 responses back from companies across the country. And as somebody who really geeks out on strategic planning, but also comes from a district that's steeped, you know, all of my career, steeped in that continuous improvement process, that is what I honed in on, is who can help us in a district of this size, scaling a plan of this detail and this magnitude and this audacity? We're going to need some help in envisioning what our structure should look like, what our processes should look, should look like. So actually, our next step is with new leaders to come back together, you know, now that we've, we can take a very short, very short breath before the real work begins. So the next step is getting back in touch with our partners. We have had two dedicated consultants from New Leaders who've shepherded us through this work. They have tons of experience. They've got templates, they've got agendas, they've got, they've got all the things. But one of the things that has really teed us up for this work is the creation of the tactical cabinet. And so I'm going to let Josie talk a little bit about tactical cabinet, some of the work that we've done to cultivate that soil a little bit of our directors across our system.
So this fall, Dr. Roberts instituted, we've had an executive cabinet in place for several years that meets every Monday in different buildings around the district. It gives us an opportunity to see buildings, to talk to principals, to see what's going on with students. The new, the new tactical cabinet was introduced this August?
August.
August. It meets twice a month for about two hours, and it is, I think, all director-level staff across the entire district, so across business and finance, talent and personnel, teaching and learning, all departments are represented there. And that team actually started this fall working through the advantage, which is a text by John Lencioni, that executive cabinet went. which was, which is a text by John Lencioni that Executive Cabinet went through last year, really in order to build up that team's capacity and muscle to work together and to work across departments. And so, in fact, tomorrow, that team is meeting to dive into this document, to start to take apart where are our hurdles and where are we already working in the right direction before we even start off with New Leaders in a couple of weeks.
Who else wants to ask a question?
Okay, any of you can take this, but have any of you thought about what the toughest conversation you're going to have with your peers about this is? There will be pushback on this, for sure. So, who's had that conversation in their head? I'd be interested to just hear how you will answer your colleagues and your friends in the district about this plan that you have put in place for them and that we've all now put in place for them. What's the toughest conversation you're going to have?
So, I can't speak for everybody, but I know for me, across all five of these strategic areas, one of the most important hurdles to making this, making this happen is changing adult habits. The hardest thing to change in a school system is not the kids' habits. Your kids are malleable, and they want to be able to strive to the level of expectation. But it's making sure that we, as a school system, are willing to embrace the uncomfortable and speak truth to each other when we see that our habits are not putting us on the pathway to achieving the goals that we've set out and that are important and that are unapologetically ambitious. And so, it means that whether it's on the Executive Cabinet level, whether it's on the tactical cabinet level, or whether it's any one of our 5,000 teammates, we need to be willing to speak up when we see that our values are not, and the way that we're acting does not resonate with what it's going to take to be able to achieve these aims.
Thanks.
I'll come answer that question as well. I think that the important thing to share with my teammates is that although this might seem like another new thing, there are lots of things that we're going to have to let go. And that now we have all of our departments working together to prioritize these things. It's in writing, so we can know what things work towards this and what things don't, and let those things go, so that we're not just piling more on our teachers and our staff with more initiatives.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rose.
I was going to say, some of the toughest conversations that I can imagine having with my colleagues are pushback because it is another new initiative, but also on the end of accountability. And so, my biggest thing is always encouraging, well, what we're doing is not working. We have to be bold. And what you're not happy with is what we've been doing. So, how can we challenge ourselves? How can we try this? And the fact that this was based off of data, that was not just, it's not from the top down. This is from every stakeholder that we pulled this data, and this is the work that needs to be done. And so, just assuring them. And then, also highlighting the fact that because it is written down and with the way that we cascaded, there is accountability, not just for the teachers, but it's accountability both ways, so.
And I think just to follow up on that, my assumption is that the part of the cascading is that it's going to show up in performance, in the performance review process. Is that how you're thinking about it? Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Ms. Marterano?
I, I guess I have questions about kind of the process. This feels, this is the first time that we're seeing it, that the community is seeing it, and it feels very, I mean, printed and bound and beautiful. It certainly does not feel like it's in a draft format or in a format in which feedback is welcome at this point. So, could you speak to the, the process that you used throughout the, the creation of this to receive feedback from the stakeholders that you've just mentioned, Rose, and highlight how you, how you heard from individuals and how you use that information to guide getting to this place? And are we in a place of, this is black and white, or?
Yeah, and anybody else hop in too. So, in terms, so the initial draft of this was put together in late November, kind of at the conclusion of the several months of the team meeting for kind of full-day meetings every couple of weeks to actually generate what you're seeing in here. At the end of that, it was taken to the Reimagining Education Team. We did teams meetings with our, with staff, principals, teachers, elementary and secondary level. I would say, to your question of, is this black and white and never going to change? I don't believe anything's ever set in stone. I believe in continuous improvement. And I imagine, and that's part of what will come up with our work with New Leaders, is what does the annual cycle of this process look like? Where we would be going, most likely in the summer or early fall, to work with stakeholders to say, here's where we got to last year with this plan. Have we been moving in the right direction? And are there concerns that we need to address at that point?
So, while the committee didn't come together until September, this work actually began in May with the convening of the, or the creation of the committee and kind of tapping people and getting dates on calendars and such. And throughout the summer, we actually worked to act as an executive cabinet team to provide a pretty robust set of information to our partners at New Leaders. So, they have a pretty comprehensive needs assessment process. They requested specific documents aligned to the various departments, you know, based on their experience. And I could actually share a copy of all the different things they requested with you. But also, the raw data, the raw feedback from the community listening sessions that had taken place the year prior with you all was part of that work. So, New Leaders worked over the summer, June, we, our deadline for that was June 30, to get all of that information to them. And they worked in July and in August, and then presented to us a comprehensive needs assessment. And I would invite other cabinet members who were present when that comprehensive needs assessment was presented to speak up. But, you know, certainly from, from my limited time two years back working with the Des Moines Public Schools, you know, I really thought they nailed it in terms of their state, their current state of our, of our system, based on all of the information that they had reviewed. And then, that became one of the first sort of presentations that New Leaders did with our Strategic Planning Committee was to say, here's all the work that, all the information that we've looked at, all the things that we've done. Here's, here's sort of the state of the state, or the state of the district right now. And it was that that then springboarded us into the development of the priorities. But I'd invite anybody else that they have. No? No takers? Okay.
So, I certainly appreciate the, the representation within the committee, the 19. As I looked through the list, I said, wow, this is, this group would probably never just naturally fall together. So, certainly appreciated that. One of the questions I had around the process of soliciting feedback was around the student voice and how the student voice was represented within this strategic plan.
I think the short answer is, it wasn't as robust as it could have been. We just actually came from that, from another meeting with the Superintendent's Advisory Council over at East High School, met with representatives from all six, or five comprehensive high schools, virtual campus of the six schools. And really, that was the first time, as a team, as an executive cabinet team, we had a chance to interact with them and talk about different priorities. You know, one of the things, so I'm going to speak specifically to Goal Three and some of the work that we've done around Goal Three, you're, you're going to see that in here. So, things like Portrait of a Graduate. So, so we've, we've got kind of the pillars of the Portrait of a Graduate, which show up in your mission as well, and things, words like resilient and that type of thing. We need student voice and feedback on some of the descriptors that we have put underneath that. How we operationalize Portrait of a Graduate, for example, is those descriptors underneath. That's how we know, what do the experiences in our classrooms need to look like? How do those need to change in order to develop students that, that are the embodiment of Portrait of a Graduate? Our Student Advisory Council is a great place to get that. You know, we've also talked as a Goal Three team about soliciting feedback via surveys for students in grades five through 12, obviously a differentiated survey, right? But to get their feedback and their voice, not on the big rocks, not on things like resilient, but on the descriptors underneath, so that as we operationalize it, we can make sure that their voice is represented in there.
Thank you.
But that's, that's only one component, and we recognize that.
Absolutely. And I certainly underfeel the tone within the plan that there is a sense and an interest in a continuous cycle. I think Principal Steve may have referenced the continuous cycle of implementation and progress monitoring. So, there's certainly opportunity for it in the future, but I was just curious.
Yeah, and I would say that comes straight from our New Leaders partners as well. You know, that recognition and having been through this in a, in a different system where I was actually a parent volunteer on a pretty comprehensive strategic planning process, and then got to, you know, serve as the Director of Teaching and Learning in that system two years later. The evolution of, of this, we have five-year objectives. We certainly have that 2030 vision, you know, through the ambitious, audacious goals, right? But if we're not looking at this on an ongoing basis, and I'm not talking annually or biannually, I mean, I'm talking, we meet as a tactical cabinet every two weeks. Every two weeks, we're looking at this. And work teams are looking at this probably even more frequently than that. If we're not doing that, this isn't a living document. And this does become something that will, will be out of, out of date in a very short amount of time.
Thank you.
I want to ask a follow-up, if it's okay. Actually, do you want to ask questions first?
I have sort of a follow-up question too.
Yeah.
Similar, similar to his question, I was looking at the makeup of the Strategic Plan Committee. And considering population in our district, it was clear to me that it was not a very diverse group of people that made up the team. So, I'm wondering how the voices of the rest of our population in the district were engaged in the process.
Are you meaning culturally diverse?
Culturally diverse, yes. Immigrant and refugee communities, how those voices were, were engaged.
I would say the answer for that is very similar to the answer for Dr. Mayberry Mays's question, and that is, the timeline of this process was such a tight turnaround. We relied pretty heavily on the feedback, the raw feedback from the community listening sessions, because we knew typically a strategic planning process for a district this size will take one to two years. And the RFP went out in March, and we knew, I mean, we don't have any time. We, the sense of urgency for this was incredibly great. So, I think while we missed an opportunity in the onset to engage face-to-face, we certainly had the voice in terms of the, the raw data. But that's something we need to be very attentive to going into this continuous improvement cycle, is how are we going to engage our, our families and our community culturally, you know, to make sure that all voices are heard and all are represented in that feedback in an ongoing way. So, I think that's an opportunity for us.
One quick question. This probably goes to the Director of Talent and Personnel, but how do you feel, and you're probably haven't thought about it or anything, but how would you implement, start implementing this in like your new hire orientations that you have every Monday? I know they go pretty long, and I think this is very important, that you might have to do two-day meetings.
We, we fully recognize that we have a limited amount of time on those first, that first day when they go through orientation. But we have already begun to think about, there's the first day, then there's the first week, then there's the first month, and then there's that, that three-month period, that 90-day period where we really want to focus on staying connected, continuing to pour into people during that time, because what we know is that people make employment decisions at the, at that 90-day mark. Do I want to stay here? Is this a place I want to be? Does, I heard this place say that they care about me, but this is what I experience every day? And so, yes, we recognize that that can't all happen on that first day, but we've already started to have conversations and figure out how we can implement things. So, we already have a Supervisor's Guide to Onboarding that we've already started to create that really looks at that first day, that first week. How are we prepping and preparing people for success? What trainings do people need? What do they need to know about us? You know, people, when they start a new job, they're like, where do I park? How do I go get lunch? What are, who are the, they think about all of those things in that first week. And if we aren't attentive to those things, we're not showing that we care about them because we're just saying, oh, okay, here you are, just go ahead and go to work, and, and we're just going to use you, instead of, no, we're going to care enough about you to think about even the smallest things that might cause you anxiety and you're, as you're learning a new job? To, to, to figure out how we can communicate that with you and support you in those ways. So, so yes, we've already had conversations about and put some things in place already to, to implement some of these things. And with the culture, we are, we're working on an RFP right now to have a partner come out and really support us with the culturally responsive piece to really figure out how we can embed that in everything we do, because we understand that it's more than a thing to do. It's who we are, it's what we do, it's how we show up every day. And so, that's, we're working there too.
How can the board help to make sure that this is not a document that sits on a shelf, but something that is continually measured, seen, and finds success?
I appreciate that, that question. And I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about every time we've met is that we need more time in contracts to be able to do meaningful professional development with all of our 5,000 employees. And so, when we look at that equitable distribution and allocation of resources, we need more time. And so, we need to think differently about our PD time, our calendars, and, and invest in that time so that we can make sure that we are creating a professional learning experience that is sustainable and not something that feels like it's another thing or something that we do occasionally, but something that is constant and ever-present in the lives of all 5,000 of our employees.
The question, and it's, it's a thought, it's also, I guess, a comment, kind of a question too. When Dr. Roberts spoke to us about this plan, one of the things he mentioned was that there are a variety of ways that things are being measured in the district and a variety of priorities. And it's, so I, I'm kind of assuming, you know, you've got the goals and guardrails, you've got this body of work. There's Measure What Matters, but I don't know if, how that connects to this. There's SIP, which may be something different. You can tell I'm already out of my, you know, out of my league in trying to guess. But how can we all better work together to, to address that? And, and you're welcome to give answers that also give us feedback on the goals and guardrails alignment as well as we think about measurements.
So, I think one of the first things is that in the next couple of months, as this is actioned, is you're going to start to see these things reflected in your board monitoring reports. That's, I think, one of the, the first ways that we're going to see that alignment is because, and that's part of that, that slide that I had about where the goals and guardrails are being served by these, is that all of these pieces are going to work together. And the Measure What Matters is actually embedded directly in this with the strategic objectives and the key results.
Got it.
So, that's all, really, the intent is that all of these pieces will flow together, top to bottom.
Great, thank you.
May I ask another question here? Okay. On strategic priority two, one of, one of the objectives was 100% of students feel the sense of belonging in the community. Can, can someone help me better understand what community? And how is it that I think about what it is that we have control over when I hear the word "community"? I don't know that I'm thinking of the same thing that you are. So, I guess that's my first question, is what is community when we're saying 100% of students feel a sense of belonging in the community?
Yeah, well, we were considering the school community, but also looking at strategic priority five in that how that school community could be. priority five, in that how that school community could be widened and include other community partners that are also working with our students. And so we didn't want to be exclusive to just the school and within the school community, but that is the base.
So the first, the first objective under strategic priority number two was 100% of students feels, I need to go back to it.
Safe.
Okay.
At school.
Safe at school.
Mm-hmm.
And then a sense of belonging in the school community.
Within that school community, yeah.
Okay. So that is school community in that one. Okay.
So do you just disaggregate?
That's a typo in the slide.
It's in schools.
So 100% of students feel a sense of belonging in school? That should not say in the community?
In the school community.
Oh. Okay. That helps. Thank you. And then in strategic priority number five, Rosie had mentioned, and maybe I misheard, but I think I heard you say all home languages would be represented in communication. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. So Dr. Roberts could speak to this more, but I know that they are working on, actually Josie might be able to help me with this. There's an app or a program that we are, parent, parents, I'll just let, I'll just let Josie.
I was going to say, I'm probably not even the best one. So part of this is the, I believe, the pilot with Parrot Square. Parrot Square has an even more robust translation option set than the current kind of district-wide platform. And so I think that was part of that, was reflecting that pilot and seeing how well the schools who have been working with that are already functioning in it.
But in addition to that, something that I've thought about is in our communities, we have so many of our alum who could help us with this communication as well. I think back to last year, I had two students in my class who spoke to Grinia. And right, and then 2019, 2020 school year, I also had, that was the first time I'd ever had a student who spoke to Grinia. She spoke hardly any English, but she was very successful. We had a great relationship. She graduated, and so I brought her back last year because she was still in the area to talk to our students. So I think this is a way specifically with, with our strategic priority five, to leverage our community members to fill in the gaps where maybe technology or our personnel can't currently do that.
Yeah, they're, having used Parent Square, I know that there are many gaps in languages that our community speaks. So thank you for clarifying that.
I think I'm going to wrap us up. I have tons of questions, but I'll find you all. And that's a good thing. You know, you want, I hope, your board really excited and engaged in asking questions. I had an idea, and I know this is kind of silly, but everybody that was on the team, I think you should come up here. We should take a picture with our strategic plans and memorialize the moment. So I'm just going to ask the group to come up and-
Before we do that, Jackie, hearing you say that you have a lot of questions and that you'll find everyone, may I offer a recommendation that we ask those questions in a way that they can be captured and provided to, and answers provided to the community from all board members? Because I know that once I dive deep into this, there'll be more questions. And if we as a board can make sure that those questions are visible and transparent to the community, I would appreciate that.
Great. So let's just make sure we say thank you very much. Really, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think the one observation I know I'm going to be really excited to see is the things that are, we're letting go. And I think, and I, and I think verbalizing that and, and saying it out loud is going to be, it's going to be hard and feel really good. So I'm, I'm equally excited to see that. Okay, unless anybody's a better idea, come on up. And I'm going to task somebody with taking a photo. Hey, Rosie, do you mind just taking a quick photo? Do we all just want to stand? What should, what should we do? Okay. So some, yeah. What, what should we do? Okay, come back here. Yeah, that's great. 9255.
Here.
Yeah, try the seat out. Come on. Dr. Dina, let's go. Okay, lots of people. Actually, come on in this way. Come in this way. Rosie, how are we looking? Here we go. Okay, look at Rosie.
Hold my book, sorry.
Hold it up. All right. Hey, thanks, everybody. We're going to take a, what? Oh, yeah. Yeah. We are going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back. And we are going to have a technology session, and then we are going to talk about spending authority. Yeah, I think so, because that's a longer conversation. But I'll defer to the two of you. So. I want to make sure, I see Phil, and I know behind Phil stands a really strong team. So if you could extend our thanks to that team, that would be great. Okay, thank you. Start it again. For, as a reminder to board members, we never had a formal IT onboarding. We have seen our district go through ransomware attack. We have open records issues, questions about records retention. And I just thought it would be good to have a very short presentation by Neil and take us through some of the, the highlights.
Yeah, I, this is great. I'm happy to be here. When Dr. Lundin, I think he stepped out, he was talking about all this great stuff. You know, I'm, I'm super excited to come to the board in the shadow of the strategic plan and, and talk about all the great things we're going to do with technology. But that's not this presentation. So this one's far more benign. There will be lots of great, exciting information. We've got a lot in the lab we're cooking up. But a, as Jackie alluded to, this is really just sort of a, a very basic kind of run-through that is, it's a beta effort. I'll fully disclose, we're, we're just starting this. But it, it's an opportunity to just sort of level set and, and talk board members through something that I have had experience with. Usually when we get new boards on, we try to sit down, do an overview and do something like this. It may be a little basic, but it'll get us kicked off. So without further ado, let me just jump in. And here's the stuff we're going to go through, just sort of, what is the tool suite? We provide the board members, kind of the, the security and the why around those tools. I am going to emphasize one of the things that I think is a particular challenge for board members, and that's phishing, what we'll talk about. And then a little bit on records retention, open the floor up, and then I'll hand the, the remote over to Ashashank for budget, which is even more exciting than this. All right. So the standard tools, and, and again, this is a little bit of recap for, for you all, but what do we provide for our board members and why? We, we give you all a user account. That's that first dot last name at DM schools.org. That's sort of your, your, your bread and butter, right? That gets you into our systems, our email, our collaboration, cloud file access, all of that through Microsoft Office 365, as well as serving as the login to your district-provided laptop, as well as logging into Wi-Fi on any of our sites. And that's on any device. So that's really kind of the number one thing you, you get as a board member. And I want to emphasize that Office 365 account, many you work out there, this is sort of the coin of the realm for business operations and email. What is good about this is, I like to tell people, the storage, we don't have quotas anymore. It is virtually unlimited. You have very large mailboxes, very large spaces to, I won't give you all the bits and bytes, but to store your files, and lots of protections built in. So this is sort of the, a best-in-class productivity management. So it's a great tool for you all to use, accessible through the web, mobile apps, et cetera. What we also provide you is the, the laptop that we've been walking through over the last few sessions. It's a Windows laptop loaded with our standard suite that you all log in, as well as a variety of security tools. I'll, I'll talk about that a, a little bit more. But it also, the hard drive for this laptop is encrypted by default. You don't even necessarily see that. There's nothing you have to do. What does that mean? If it's ever stolen and somebody would try to pull, not only can they not log in because they don't have your credentials or your multi-factor tokens, they cannot, they used to be, they'd remove the drive, plug it in, and they could copy all your stuff. Now there's a strong encryption, and even the FBI can't break it. So that, that's a, a little bit of a consolation. But, but why do we even provide this? The, this suite, you know, we provide to you all because we, we can support it, and it is protected with these enterprise-class tools. So we recommend, or highly encourage, that, that you all as board members use the laptop and your account for that day-to-day board work, because it, it is supportable. All these tools are backed up, so there's backups, we can restore things. We can support you all through our central service desk, the CSD email, or if you call the 8161 number between 7:00 AM, 4:30 PM, or even reach out to me 24/7, we're going to make sure we're able to take care of you. I can't necessarily do the same with your cell phone, if you have it on your work computer, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of a caveat. That's why we do encourage it. Obviously, you know, in the modern workforce, everything's web-based. You, you may, you know, you don't have to carry around 10 computers. But again, in this role, it is important to, to think about that. With that, I want to talk a little bit about security. In that suite that, that we're defending, there are some protections. We did have a cybersecurity event, and this isn't a security deep dive. We could certainly do that at some point. We will likely bring a, a security update to the board. But I did want to mention that passwords have come up. We use a 16-character, highly complex password. That's basically in line with best practice. What is interesting is the National Institute of Science and Technology, Microsoft and others have recommended in general that best practice is no longer a time-based expiration. So I came out of the DOD where we were expiring passwords every 90 days. What research- What research has found out was the more aggressive you are in passwords in expiration, you create adaptive behavior where people go into pattern matching. They just make the same password, but they switch a digit and/or more commonly, people just start writing stuff down. So with the advent of modern multi-factor, which is what you have with your bank and just about everywhere that the phone and getting prompted for login, we went away from time-based reset. That's why you are not getting your password reset on a periodic basis. That's part of where the industry has moved. Our conditional multi-factor authentication system is really one of the best, it's one of Microsoft's highest end platforms that comes with our equipment that basically guards against a variety. It will lock you out of your account if it sees a variety of things or challenge you for the multi-factor token. If it sees you, hey, you don't normally travel like this, or you were in LA and now you're in New York 10 minutes later. That's impossible. We have a problem. There's a variety of suspicious activity tokens, malicious IPs. Microsoft has a very sophisticated mechanism for ensuring your account's still safe, but not necessarily just arbitrarily doing so, but being very judicious about it. We also have a lot of aggressive email filtering. I'll talk about phishing for just a second, but a lot of, again, those best-in-class measures. The laptop, another, again, it's encrypted. We use some advanced threat protection tools that are on there. It is, that helps with monitoring. It's updated. It has strong web filtering to protect you from yourself. If you would do some of the things I'm going to tell you not to do in your email, like click a link. So we do some blocking, but really, again, why use this suite? We have a 24/7, 365 managed security operations center that monitors all those district endpoints and activities. So that if we see something unusual going on, we can mediate immediately, and we do. We have over, we've had 4,500 cases come up. Most of them are benign, but we have had to weigh in at times and actually, you know, reset, change people's passwords or intervene. And usually that's done within minutes. So we have somebody keeping eyes on all of our stuff. So again, it's an encouragement to use the district provided devices. You don't necessarily have somebody looking at your home computer. You might, it's probably a bad guy that has access and they're watching 24/7. No, I know you all have good cyber hygiene at home. So that's kind of the tools, but I did want to kind of lean into this idea that, yes, it's a good platform and yes, it's protected. We have good measures. What we're seeing in the cybersecurity space is the bad guys, really, they're not trying to do a lot of drive-by, the old, I'm going to put a virus on your computer. It's really, they figured out the best thing they can do is just talk you out of your username and password by sending a phishing, by sending an email. And a lot of times just asking very politely. I love the term whaling. That's, that's you guys. We, you know, we target important people, CEOs, superintendents, board members. Why? Your, all of your emails are publicly available on the website, as they should be. You're serving the community. You have to interface with your constituents, but it makes you a prime target. And just as an interesting sort of FYI educations, the fourth most targeted industry for phishing campaigns. And we, we have the worst click-through rate, meaning when we get at people, it's because we are, we have big hearts. You saw it in the planning. We're trusting, you know, we're, we want to believe, but we don't want to believe. And no matter how good our tools are, phishing emails, they get through. I mean, this is just, it is a non-stop game of whack-a-mole. I put two examples up here. I know they're kind of small, but I encourage you all, as you work in your district, you know, board capacity. When you get emails in, I mean, some of this is common sense, but just kind of a reminder. One, you're going to notice on there this, this caution bar, that's a recent ad we put on there that just says, hey, this came from outside of DMPS. So that if you get an email from Ian dot Roberts at something, that's something, even if you don't look at the email right away, you're going to be like, hey, wait a second. That's kind of a red flag, but we always encourage double check the email address in the domain of emails. I mean, it's common sense, but you'd be surprised how many people don't necessarily do that. If you get an unexpected topic, like why would we be getting a thing about, you know, background checks or anything where you see these weird titles? On the false sense of urgency, weird designs. Now, I will say they're getting better. The one on the left is starting to look much more sophisticated, like what Microsoft puts out. The one on the right is kind of just lazy and like, hey, I'm going to shoot this one out. So I mean, that, those are sometimes red flags, poor grammar spelling, et cetera. So just an encouragement and kind of reminder that as board members, you will be targets, be extra diligent. What should you do if you get one real quick? Don't respond. Don't antagonize or try to, you know, call them out. Definitely, of course, most importantly, don't click the links, open attachments. I mean, it kind of goes without saying, but it's a thing. What I would recommend is you can report phishing. You see here in Outlook, if you click those little three dots, click report, report phishing, that helps Microsoft dial in their filters that we use. If you get something weird from Dr. Roberts asking for an Apple gift card, excuse me, maybe call him up. And yeah, it was, you know, he was, it was a birthday present. I don't know, but for the most part, it's going to be bogus. Then just delete the email. And if you would get it over and over, it is something, oh, thank you. I would ask that you share, you could share directly with me. And the reason for that is we can do some custom filtering, especially around board members, to make sure that stuff doesn't get through and we want to be dialed in. And then always be skeptical. All right. And then again, so all of your records are there. You haven't gotten phished. This has come up, and this is some important discussion is, you know, this is an official, your email account, your laptop, that is a, you know, it's a public asset. It's subject to discovery. So the interesting thing is unlike, say, board minutes or, you know, free and reduced lunch data or personnel and student records. The electronic records you have conducting sort of day-to-day operations is, there is no specific statutory requirement. So basically we have to just hew to the policy that we have. What is that policy you ask? As far as your inbox and any other folder in your email, we do not have a set expiration date. Some companies are very aggressive because they don't want to expose anything to discovery. We have chosen, and again, this is, this has been our historical, we have not reviewed this for anything, but as of now, we do not expire inbox or any other folders. But we do expire sent items and deleted items after 30 days. And I do understand, I know I talked a little bit to Jackie, 30 days is a little arbitrary. It may be too aggressive. I think that's a discussion we're going to have internally, but as of this very second, it is 30 days. For the average employee, after you depart, six months after your account is terminated, everything's gone forever. Board members, there are a couple of unique things I do want to highlight. When you are appointed to the board, you have your account, you are in a special status called legal hold, not because you're in legal jeopardy. It's just a name. But what that means is absolutely everything you do, there is a copy of it retained. So even when you delete it, you delete it out of your delete ads, it's, it kind of lives back here. And there's, that's also true for executive cabinet members as well. So any of sort of the officers of the institution, we do that just in case. Well, there's just a variety of reasons. So that's something to just be aware of. That's even your files in OneDrive, et cetera. You are in that special status. And as well as your accounts are not automatically deleted at six months. This is a manual discussion with the board president, the board secretary on, if there's turnover in the board. That said, eventually your account is deleted. So if you want to retain emails or files, say you worked on a project or there was something specific, that's something you would work with IT at the end of your term to make sure you get before you delete. And I did put a quick tip in there for the scent for now, you could make a folder in your inbox if you wanted to manually save sent items for important topics. That's something to consider. But that was just, that's a quick run-through. There's, there's a million more things we could talk about, but that's kind of the high points of, you've got your device in your account. We encourage you to use them. You're protected. We're here to support you and be safe in the mean streets of cyberspace. Any other questions?
People have questions. Ria?
So what happens if there is an email that seems fairly credible? I mean, there's nothing that would make you think that it's not, and you click on it or you open it and then you realize that it wasn't, it wasn't a good email?
Sure. I would say it depends.
Okay.
Most of the time, opening the email itself is not the act that we're worried about. It is really clicking the links or the attachments that are in the email that expose us to risk. Even then, most, most of the time, the protections on the device, the filters, et cetera, will render it pretty much useless. But we actually just recently had a case where they had some kind of zero day come through. It only impacted one person, but they clicked it and it basically launched a script on their computer that did some stuff to send out more spam emails. So if you do and you go through and you realize you did it, you can certainly reach out to me, especially like I said, in your board capacity. I'd rather, you can always call the help desk, but if you feel like, hey, wait, this is definitely weird, something happened, my computer is getting funky, just, just reach out to me, please.
Thank you.
We'll get you sorted.
I had one question, not as much about the computer. As you know, I have not used this the way I should, but I'm going to start. I was curious if, maybe not now, but if we could receive a list or something of maybe DMPS-supported apps on our phones that would be helpful as board members. I downloaded the Board Docs app and I don't know if that's official with DMPS, but it does let us access.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
But I'm guessing maybe there are others that I don't know of, or maybe not, maybe you just want us to stick to the.
We could go through that. I was, yeah, that's a great put, and that's even great for training. So I'll take that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can you just talk us through, you talked about 16-character passwords. Can you talk about best practices for not passwords, but passphrases? And making them, just how much of a difference it makes to make it just the tiniest bit more complicated?
Yeah, I mean, this is all about not giving the, you know, slowing the bad guys down. Obviously, if you give them an infinite time, they're, they're going to get after it. But we put those complexities in to, you know, so that it isn't one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We encourage people to come up with those, as Director Dix mentioned, just something you could remember, you know, using nicknames for your kids and special dates and other things, or using, you know, kind of texting language or symbols to represent words. But it's things that you could remember because it is long and you don't use it all the time. But it is imperative as, as we have that to really, again, slow the bad guys down and make it exceptionally difficult for them. That's really the long and short.
Good. Last question?
Two, two things. First, just a word to the wise for my colleague at my work. We just recently had like a multi-factor kind of attack where someone was trying multiple phone numbers to have us put in the code to verify them. So just again, if you didn't ask for the, to, you know, if you're not trying to log in, then no one should be asking you for your code. So don't be that person that gives it away. And then I think the second thing is, I'm really just curious from you, new to this role, new to the district. Obviously, we've, we've gone through a lot when it comes to IT and I am all about safety and security. Sounds like your approach is really more of like, let's just proactively try to filter out all we can. But what are we doing internally around like education and training? And do we have robust policies in place for those like habitual violators and/or just kind of philosophy on, on that?
Yeah, I, we have an annual training, a cybersecurity training module that all employees are required to take. It's okay. I mean, it's good. We have a emerging item that we're working on, which is a simulation where we do some of the phishing or activities to our employees ourselves to sort of not catch people, but to teach them that, hey, this was really obvious and here's why, that engenders a follow-up training. We have not, we've had initial discussions and this is always a little fraught in the corporate, or just, I mean, in the work world. What is the hammer we want to use? I'm going to share a quick anecdote. When I was in the DOD and I was taking my first job in Sioux City, Iowa, in Sioux City Schools, I logged into their webmail system. And that was the school system from a military base. That was in violation of their policy. Within like an hour, they locked me out of my account and I had to go to a training and I had to stand up in front of everybody and admit my sins. So I was like, my name's Neil Schroeder. I logged into an inappropriate website and that's why I'm here today. And it was like an all-day affair. So that was like probably to your, that was on, off the rails. But we were trying to have this internal dialogue on what is the follow-up and follow-through. So it's a journey.
Yeah, I mean, clearly we know one click can really disrupt a lot for our entire district, and so I think it needs to be taken seriously. I'm glad you're here and so just support your efforts. Thank you.
And we'll, again, we'll, we're going to keep doing our absolute level best, but it is hard. I cannot claim perfection. Again, stuff will get through. That's why it is a community effort of education and just to continue discussion.
Can I ask one last thing, just again, just for board colleagues? Best practice when using our computers, especially on, should we not use public wifi and maybe tether to our phones? Is that a better practice?
Yeah, I generally recommend using your phone hotspot, usually the cellular. I mean, that's, it's very difficult to get in the way there. I mean, I would say if you're careful, if it was an emergency, I would, I wouldn't be completely afraid of it. We have controls built in, but as a best practice, I would generally say use your phone hotspot when you're traveling or out and about. Or if you're in a secured space or you have other things, and if you don't, the other thing is you can, we don't have to get technical, but you can use VPN clients. And there's some other mechanisms if you have no choice, or maybe you're overseas and you want to go that route.
Neil, I just want to say thank you for taking this so seriously. We really appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, team, we are moving to talk about spending authority. I just want to frame this conversation a little bit. So as a reminder, Shashank provided us kind of an overview and a little bit of forecasting to what the FY26 budget process was going to look like. That was in December.
In December, that is correct.
And along the way, Shashank spent some time talking about spending authority. We then had the, thank you, Rosie. We then had the opportunity to join that optional call with Margaret Buckton, where she again did a little bit of Budget 101 reiterating. And we're now at the place where we're going to dig in and talk a little bit more about spending authority. And so, and part of the reason we're doing it now is because we will have to give Shashank some feedback, ideally next week. And wanted to have some time to ask questions, understand the decision that is being asked of us, and then be able to reflect on it. So with that, I'm going to turn it to you and take it away.
Thanks, Jackie. So yes, when I presented in December, the ask from the board was that when we meet, no, you needed a five-year projection in February. And I thought February would be extremely late because in case the board did not decide to approve 2% uses of spending authority, the team would need more time to really find areas where we need to cut costs. So I spoke to Dr. Roberts and in the board agenda planning meeting, we decided that we'll do it on 21st of January. But I need a decision from the board on 21st and Jackie requested that if we need a decision, let's do it on 14th. Even if it is not fully baked, so if there's something which is missing, I will definitely address that on 21st. So even if it's not fully baked, at least present to the board so that all of you start thinking and then making a decision as to where we want to go.
I should have said that. I did tell Shashank that if it wasn't completely fake, that was okay. So I do, I do actually just want to acknowledge that. So thanks for saying that.
Absolutely, Jackie. The other thing which I told everyone who left the room and went, that anyone who leaves the room, please don't come to me for any money. So there are four different scenarios that I plan to present. One is, one is not using anything from the unspent spending authority. One is the 1% that I had proposed in December. The other is 2%, which the board requested that I work on. And the third was to use 2% in year one and then 1% thereafter. So I've got four different scenarios that I'm trying to work on. So the increase in costs, we have done a detailed analysis to see what the increase in cost would be. And since the SSA, and I provided a key down below because there are too many acronyms, the supplemental state aid, we have taken 2%. the Supplemental State Aid, we have taken 2% as that is the average for the last 10 years, and that is what we use for our budgeting process. Then I've also used, and this is the scenario where we are seeing 0% utilization of SSA. We're also taking a scenario of how much SSA we will be getting in '25, '26. And '25, '26 numbers are fairly certain. But as we know, the cap on household income goes away. So it's difficult to estimate what the number would be going '27 onwards. It could be a tsunami, it may be much more than $2 million. But if it becomes more than $2 million, our enrollment also would be negatively hurt. And that's going to be a bigger hurt than the ESA that we will be getting. But this is what I've assumed, and I've tried to keep it consistent in all scenarios. The only thing that would change in each scenario is how much of SSA we are using. So costs, I'm sorry, how much of USA we are using. So increase in cost is pretty much the same, 2% SSA is pretty much the same, and ESA is pretty much the same. So in this scenario, what we are seeing is the net deficit is what will be the deficit year after year. And if it keeps happening every year, where will be our basically unspent spending authority? And that's a typo, it should have been USA versus SSA, the last line, my bad. So what will be the unspent spending authority year after year? So as you will see, by 2029, we get into negative 4%. That is something which I don't think so anyone wants to move forward with. The second scenario was 1%, keeping everything consistent, but using 1% unspent spending authority, which is approximately around $6 million. The trend would be that we would be below the board goal of 15% in 2030. And this is the one that I had proposed in December meeting. The board asked me for 2%, so we don't get negative with 2%, but we go below the board goal in 2028. Till '27, we are fine. And the fourth scenario was that if we take 2% next year and then 1% thereafter. This will extend it by another year, so then we go into 2029 with less than the board goal. Now, having said that, whichever scenario the board adopts, we adopt, we are adopting it for '26. When we are discussing '27, we'll again have a robust discussion to decide, did we do better than what our projections are? Did we do worse than what our projections are? Do we do 2% again? Do we do 1% or do we nothing? So that is something which will be up in the air. And if you see in all these four scenarios, the board goal is 15%. Over a period of time, all of them, and especially the one where we're using 0%, that is nothing, and that is not what the board is proposing at all. But I just wanted to show what a drop that would be. But in the other three scenarios, over a period of time, some sooner than the other, it would be going below our board goal. So that is what I had to share, and I'm open for questions on any of these scenarios.
Can you remind me, board goal, is that a best practice? I know we've talked about this, I just can't remember. It is a policy?
15, 15%, yeah.
Yeah, so it didn't give a range, I think it was 15.
Correct.
Now, I think to your question, that's also a conversation we can have about.
Right, like how did they pick 15? That was going to be my question. I mean, that wasn't, is that best practice? Is that?
So the unfortunate part is spending authority is unique to the state of Iowa. So we, there is no comparison that we can do with any other state. And the 15% was decided by the board even before I joined the school district. So it was something, a decision that was made probably six, seven years back. The reason why it is 15% is approximately two months of cash that would be needed or the expenses that we can service in case there is a 0% SSA in a given year. And we have had one of those years, I don't remember it exactly, but it's, if you go in my older charts, there is there, we have had a 0% SSA. So that is the only reason why the board at that point in time decided on 15%. But I was not there at that point in time, sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think IASB has like 10 to 15?
Correct, you're right.
How do you, how do you feel about that, that 10 to 15 range? And what would be the concerns if there was a discussion about lowering it?
Jackie, if we are having the same discussion next year, I would feel more comfortable for the simple thing that we know the incumbent has made certain bold statements, and I don't know how will it pan out?
Yep, I think that's fair. Would it be that property taxes somehow is going to also? I'm trying to think through the correlation of property taxes, and maybe you can articulate it and how the property tax conversation might ripple and impact us.
So based on my understanding so far, and the governor is actually having the State of the Union address right now, so I don't know what are the new things which will be coming. The property tax impact will be more limited to cities and counties and not so much to the school district. That is my understanding so far.
So we still get that same chunk of the dollar?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Any, go ahead.
Shashank, are you still recommending 1% after having done this analysis?
I would suggest we can go with the scenario that I'm sharing, which is the scenario four. We can go with 2% and then make an analysis next year. Because if we do rein in our expenses, if we do manage our costs better, we could extend that, that 1% which over here will help us till '28. Instead of '29, it could even be '30. So I am comfortable for one year, but this particular scenario of 2% year after year, I'm definitely not comfortable with.
I would love for you to talk a little bit about uses of this pot of money. So let's assume it is 2%, that would be what?
12 million.
Right, yeah.
12 million dollars.
What are, what would you recommend, things that you can use it for and things you can't use it for?
So there is no limitation because this is going to be going to the general fund. So we can use it for doing exactly what we want to do, whether it is investing in diploma plus strategic, strategic planning process or whatever it is. The money is going back to general fund. So this is not bound by the way we can spend it.
I think to clarify though, what I didn't hear you say was FTEs. And I think that's really what I'm trying to ask, which is the only guarantee is that this money is here for a year.
Very true. To flip it, if we don't use 2%, we will have to go back and reduce FTEs. Because this is what will be needed just to remain flat with the previous year's expenses. So based on what we have discussed in executive cabinet, with so many initiatives going on, whether it is the strategic planning initiative, whether it's a reimagine education initiative, asking or reducing FTEs may put hurdles for us to implement what we really want to implement. So if we don't use USA, then we will have to cut headcount. And that's the reason why I was requesting that we make the decision by 21st so that in case we decide that it's not 2%, it's 1% or 0%, then we have a daunting task in front of us.
Questions?
Just for clarification, a 1% utilization would result in less FTEs?
So to give you an idea.
Are they less teachers?
So obviously, we cut all across the district. And last year, we had cut across 4% in central office and 2% in the teaching staff. And that was purely based on enrollment. We take an average cost of FTE in the district as approximately $80,000, $85,000. So if we don't cut $6 million, $6 million by $80,000, $85,000, we are talking about a significant share of staff that will need to be laid off in a fairly short period of time. And that is why, to your point, I would suggest, because we are in January, to do 2% and then have that discussion maybe during the year as to how the year is progressing and then decide what do we want to do for next year, is it 2% or 1%?
But just for clarification, is that a board decision? Can we direct the district to say, we do not want any FTEs coming out of the classroom, but we would like to see some cuts in other areas?
I think there's a way to say it that is about achieving student outcomes and a way to have that conversation. I think honestly, part of why I'm struggling is we haven't even seen the budget. We haven't seen how you're allocating funds. So it's kind of like we're having a conversation in a vacuum a little bit. I guess, let's just do, let's do, are there any questions? And then I'd love to get some feedback from board members on what you're thinking. But let's clarify in questions first. So Patrick, you asked a question.
So I heard you say, Mr. Shashank, that for now you are recommending that we go with scenario four, right?
That is accurate.
You referenced or mentioned that the last time, the 15% was before you started. What is the practice of the board rediscussing there? At some point, we have to rediscuss that as well. And I was just, I am, this is foreign language to me, so I started looking up some stuff myself. And I saw that the utilization, or no, not the utilization, what is the thing called? The 15, 15%, what that's called, what is that?
Solvency ratio?
No, the 15% is the unspent spending authority.
Yes, goodness, that it is sometimes determined by student population? Or is that, is that not a factor at all?
No, I don't know, we've never engaged students for coming up with that ratio.
No, no, not engaging students in the conversation, you're not using enrollment numbers at all?
So the increase in costs, which I'm seeing, is driven by student enrollment. Because if we don't have a declining enrollment situation, then the increased revenue which comes offsets the increased expenses to a certain extent.
Got it, okay.
And we have taken the enrollment from what the demographic, demographer had done for us in the five-year plan so that we are consistent everywhere.
I think I have the clarity I need, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'd love to get some early comments, I'm going to save mine to the end.
Shashank, what if, what if our plans work? We are going with worst-case scenario here because that's what we have to do. That's how, that's how you do it. What would be the trigger for, or what would success look like from a, because you've said to us on numerous occasions, it is about enrollment. And so if our bold plans start working and we end up with more enrollment, when does that number start to turn? How long does that number take to start to turn so that it makes a difference in the budget? So that you see this differently?
So per student, we get $8,000. Now, our increase in costs year over year are between $14 to $16 million. So, and we get, if the SSA continues to be given at the same clip that we are getting, which is 2%, 2% SSA comes to approximately around $4 to $5 million. So from $15 million, if you knock off $5 million, you still have a $10 million budget deficiency. Now, depending on, at what clip the student's enrollment is increasing, that'll decide how quickly that thing can turn around. Our problem has been, we have lost students year after year. One of the strategic goals, if you saw, was the OE out should not exceed the OE in. And until we can bug that trend, and I don't know whether strategic planning would help us in that, reimagine education would help us in that, what would help, I don't know. But the other thing I would definitely put a caveat to that, Patrick, is that it is not something which is going to happen in a year's time. This is something which will take multiple years, even if everything is working, yeah.
I think that that's probably what I wanted to.
I wanted to ask also, how long do we wait if enrollment indeed increases because of the changes that we're implementing? How long do we wait before we can say that it's, we're in a better place?
That would depend on how much enrollment is actually increasing. If it's an increase of 50 on net, which is including the way out, it's not going to have a huge impact because 50 students times 8,000, we're talking about $400,000. Instead of that, we have 500 students increase, that's a very different response.
Jackie, you asked for our kind of just overall thoughts. I would share that I am in favor of moving forward with scenario four. I am, what I want to be clear on is I am not in favor of cutting FTE right now. I think there's too many big plans, there's too much progress being made. And I think that this would be a stake in that role for us to even fully utilize and fully receive the benefit of any of these plans right now. So that would be my, where I would stand.
Shashank, remind me, did we do 1% or 2%, what did we do last year?
Last year, actually, it came out to be.
Four?
No, no, it was, it was a percent last year, yeah.
1%?
Yeah.
You had a heart attack when I said four, huh? You were like, oh my gosh, no!
But it was a higher number, it was more than 6 million, though, wasn't it?
It was, it was.
I thought it was nine.
So if it was nine, it was a percent and a half then? Because 1% is approximately $6 million.
Yeah, I think it was a percent and a half.
I remember saying last year when we had this conversation that there's a reason you have a savings account, it's to invest, right? And I feel like we've been putting in the work over these last couple of years especially, or I guess since Dr. Roberts came, to really start to think through what does the future look like in planning? And so I think I do support, I'm with Dr. Mayberry Mays, that I think we need to continue on our planning. Again, use the money that we have, we have it for a reason. But I think this sort of lights a fire under me and I hopefully my board colleagues to realize that this money's not going to be there for forever. And so we really need to start looking at the plans coming to fruition and being successful quickly.
Thanks. I think I'd agree with what's been said about the recommendation for scenario four. I'll make this caveat, and I said it last year and I'll just continue to say it. I think I'm not convinced yet that there are not savings to be had outside of the classroom and particularly at the administration level. And where there are opportunities to automate, to make things more efficient, I think that's our responsibility because that money should be going to the classroom. It does not need to be going to administration where we don't have to have it there. So that would be my priority, just a thought of as we move forward, if we are not looking for budget savings in automation of some of the things that we do, then I'd be disappointed in that moving forward. Thanks.
This is a really interesting conversation to have after we just received the very audacious strategic plan. And I think that, that I would like the community to hear what type of rock and hard place we are in right now and really what we are up against and the plans that we have and we are so excited about and that we celebrate just moments ago. How do those happen without, without having the funding to be that bold and to be that audacious and to really make impactful change for the students in our community? So I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I'm glad that we're being really open and honest and transparent about the reality of it. And I, I agree with my board colleagues about, you know, we need to be looking in all the nooks and crannies for opportunities, but we really need to be thinking outside of the box when it comes to where are opportunities for ensuring that we are using any possible resource to support this new strategic plan and doing the best that we can for the students that we serve.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I, I agree with you, Ms. Martorano. I keep going back, my mind keeps going back to this strategic plan that we were presented with tonight. And I think that it does, this information lets, lights a fire under me and it should light a fire under everyone. We discussed, someone mentioned habits need to be changed. I think Dr. Lundin said that. And there's a lot of things that will change. And I agree also that the last place that needs cuts is the classroom. So yes, scenario four, probably at this point is what I would support.
Thank you.
Anna, do you have any? I have a slightly different take. 2%, I'll just start as where I think we should be. I feel like the real conversation we actually need to have is about what's in the budget. And year over year, I feel like I even remember sitting next to Kelly Sawyer. We've talked about, do we need to do an audit of our programs? Do we need to do an audit of our human resources? And I just feel like we should be really intentional and really thoughtful. This is 12.6 million dollars. That is a lot of money. And I would love for us to have the conversation, we're piloting programs right now. Do we need to invest more money in specific programs that move reimagining education forward? To your point about the strategic plan. But something has to get cut and, and I, I don't, I can't say with confidence and I apologize and, and it's, other than always hearing about staff cuts, I would like to better understand just, when was last time we actually really audited a comprehensive school system for efficiencies? And, and I just wonder what that exercise would show? So I, I just, 2% absolutely, but it can't, I hope we just don't, like, I think we should be really thoughtful about how we spend that money. Because maybe there, you know, I think we're all consistent on classroom. We're all consistent on student outcomes. We should be consistent on making sure we're investing in reimagining education in the pilot programs. But I think we really need to think about this conversation about audit. And, you know, AJ spoke to us about what a program audit looks like. Other people have spoken to us about that. And I'd love to talk to Dr. Roberts and just hear his thoughts on what would help. We, that was something we talked about having for him.
Actually, we talked about him coming into that.
Correct. And so I just think we should maybe think about the tools that he needs to, to begin to even then get his head around the shifts in talent and personnel. And so that's a long way of saying, I think we're all consistent on the 2%. I think we really need to have a conversation and see things.
I agree, we can't have the same conversation again next year. I think this is the second time, right?
Right, so.
So if I may add, I had requested a few months back, all my executive cabinet colleagues, especially our two new C-suite people, Robert, Dr. Robert Lundin and Neil, to evaluate all the contracts that we have in place to see whether we need to have those contracts. Because at times we just keep signing contracts because they've always been in existence. And in all fairness, both of them are trying to wrap their arms around the new team that they are leading right now. But that is something which will be ongoing. Second thing is, Matt is no longer here and over here. Matt, Josie and myself had visited a program on, a course on program evaluation, almost a year, year, year and a half back when, year and a half, two years back actually, when, when Matt was interim soup. And I think we were quite looking forward to implementing it, but then the gears got shifted because we wanted to focus on reimagine education and, and the strategic planning process. And the team felt that there's only so much bandwidth that they have. So we can always reengage. I, I don't know how much bandwidth everyone would have, but we can always reengage in program evaluation. Because the company that, whose program we had attended, and there could be other programs as well, basically lays out a data-driven way of analyzing which is the program that we really need to move forward with and which program is not working and we need to drop. That is a great way for us to focus. And I think in the strategic planning meeting, we said, drop some of the things which are not needed. So this is where we need to extend, even over here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be an amazing step. And I wonder even if the step before is to say, we've got goals and guardrails, we've got reimagining education, we've got a strategic plan. If it's not included in there, why are we funding it? Like I, has even that higher level conversation taken place? And so I just, you know, I, I don't want to belabor this point. I do want to encourage our board, that's a lot of money. And if, if we're going to make that significant investment, I think we should be really thoughtful about what we're spending it on.
Can I ask one more clarifying question just for, of that increase, ballpark, I'm not going to hold you to it. What is talent and personnel in that year-over-year increase every year? So when we're talking about how much goes up every year, can you give me a ballpark percentage of what is salaries in that?
So the assumptions that I have gone in that cost is a 3% increase in salary, 1% increase in all, all other expenses, and 7% increase in health costs. So those are the three large assumptions because we know that it-
What costs 7% in?
Healthcare costs, healthcare costs. So we know that 83% of our staff, I mean, 83% of our expenses are presented through staff. So th- those are the biggest drivers which are really increasing the costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It might not be a right spot to ask this question. Have we looked at alternatives in healthcare costs? What?
Thanks for asking that question. And if the board remembers, last year, we had done an RFP for the pharmacy-related costs. So the, it, that program got implemented from July 1. We have our first meeting with Blue Cross as well as our consultant sometime in February to see in the first six months, how much of cost reductions have we really driven? So if you look at our overall health costs, approximately around $70 million. Seven zero. Two zero is pharmacy-related and five zero, 50 is other health-related costs. And we were attacking the pharmacy portion first, 20%. Based on our preliminary analysis that was done with, so we had, we had got almost four or five responses and we moved forward with Wellmark. The reduction should be around one and a half million dollars from 20 million dollars. So that is almost seven and a half percent reduction in health, in pharmacy costs alone. We want to do that for at least a year. And in case it is successful, we do want to look at the health cost also to see if there is any possibility to drive efficiencies out of that. The interesting thing was, whenever we discussed with Wellmark, prior to doing the RFP, they always said, there's no give at all. But once we did the RFP, they are the ones which had the maximum reduction for us. And there was no change in any medications that any of our staff was taking. So this, for the staff, it was absolutely like nothing has changed. So that worked extremely well. If, if it is successful, could the same thing happen for healthcare? Possibly, but it's difficult to say. We, so we still don't have the data to really see whether those savings are working or not, and we'll have better data sometime in February. But you're right, because that is an increasing cost for everyone across the country. It's getting out of hand.
You mentioned program evaluation. Do we no longer have program evaluators on our data team?
I am going to ask if Josie is here. Josie, oh, oh, Matt is sitting over here. I didn't even see you sitting over there.
I'm not a program evaluator.
No, 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 no. I was talking about-
We, there used to be. So I don't know if those positions have been eliminated or, or removed.
I can't answer that question. I, I don't know, you know?
She has people assigned in her department that are doing that work. So like for our Montessori, you know, pilot for sixth grade, she has individuals designated in her department. I don't know that they're called program evaluators, but in essence, that's what they're doing in addition probably to some of their other responsibilities.
Okay, so the actual, I mean, there were, I believe, two or three program evaluators, that was their title, in that particular department at one time. So it sounds like those have been eliminated and the work has been assumed.
Assumed by other individuals in the department.
Thank you.
Shashank. I, I know that this is, is high level and if you don't have the answer iron perfectly, that's acceptable. Can you give an idea of how much is spent on contracts per year?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't answer that often. The only thing I would say is that 83% of staff costs, so contract is coming from the balance, 17%.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shashank, do we expect an increase in cost for healthcare? So what we have now, the cost that we, 7% you said?
Yes, that is what I've dialed in over here.
Okay, I missed that, sorry.
No, that's fine. Yep, you're welcome.
I just, I have one question actually, just, I'm just trying to get my head around this concept of an audit. It's come up multiple times in conversations about program versus personnel. And I'm wondering if you've ever had experience, work, like seeing that in play in a corporate environment or any feedback you have on that?
We did, Jackie, but we had engaged McKinsey. And those guys charge eight to $10 million for a project of this size. I don't know any small consultants who do it.
Maybe talk about what it is. Don't think about so much about how much it would cost.
Sure, sure. So at least with McKinsey, when we worked, we used to tell them that they would be paid based on how much costs they will drive out. So they would get a fixed amount to do the work, plus a percentage of what they would drive. So they had an incentive and motivation to look at it really hard to drive the costs out.
I think what I'm also hearing you say is that some of the things in our control contracts, what else are some of the, I mean, you know, separate from personnel? And I think you've asked questions and we typically ask questions about where the money's going in terms of classroom, you know, the different levels of tiers. Are there other buckets that the district is reviewing in addition to contracts?
Not actively that I am aware of, but the discussion that we had had was, I said, if we have to drive down costs, costs should not necessarily be related to FTEs. If there are other ways we can drive down costs, like by reducing consultant contracts and other things, we should be evaluating because a target is cost, not an FTE target. And the challenge that I hear today, even at central office, and I, and I hear what you say, Patrick, is the teams have been trimmed over the last few years and the people who are existing are working reasonably hard and they're feeling the pressure of what is, of what work they're doing. The only thing it can change is if we stop doing certain things. But continuing to do what we have always done with the, with lower staff is going to make it very difficult. And to your point, automation is something which definitely helps.
I think also alignment of staff to the new priorities, right? So there's a couple of different ways to think about that too, which is you don't want the team to fall apart, but there also may be adjustments that have to be made to have the right people to lead the work.
That's fair.
Jackie, I'm sorry, I have to ask one more clarifying question. These estimates are based off of, or include the, do they include any potential savings for whatever plan comes out of reimagining education? Okay, that's an important clarifier.
Yeah.
It, it does not.
So actually, I mean, I would say as, when we come together, that's a big question that we'll have, Matt, as well.
Absolutely.
So is it safe to say that there is consensus on the 2%? There's just not consensus on what that money will be directed towards?
I think that's accurate.
I just think, yes, but we need to be careful that we can't, we can't be taking a, a vote of any kind in this one session, so.
I'm looking for consensus. Yep. Okay, you got what you need.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Board colleagues, actually, I need five more minutes. I know you have to go, Jenna. Skylar, you're going to visit with Anna and Maria. Patrick, you're going to meet with Kim and just provide a brief snapshot of the 21st. Just the, you know, kind of what to expect.
Got it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Kim's like, what?